Wheat Ridge Channel.
I'm trying to order the Wheat Ridge City Council Meeting of November 22, 2010. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Karen Adams.
Justice Demott.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 8, 2010?
So moved.
Second.
If a motion for approval is seconded by Councilmember Stites, discussion on the minutes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight in ceremony. Would I ask our Arvada Food Bank to please step forward? And our police chief, Dan Brennan? Please display your last name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Brad Rupert, R-U-P-E-R-T. I'm president of the Arvada Community Food Bank. The food bank, whoops, has served the community for over 28 years. The food bank's territory includes much of Wheat Ridge from 38th Avenue north to the boundaries with Arvada. And last year, the food bank served over 1,200 households in the city of Wheat Ridge. That included over 4,400 individuals. That represents roughly 7 percent of clientele that we serve. Last year, we extended our backpack program to two schools in Wheat Ridge. And so we now serve weekend meals to children, to over 187 children in those two schools. That effort's been largely the result of the efforts of your chief Brennan. And we'd like to say that you are, I'm sure, you appreciate how lucky you are to have a chief and have a leader such as that in your community. But Chief Brennan has really spearheaded the effort. He's led the effort to raise funds for this program in Wheat Ridge. And the community bank is grateful for his leadership. And I'm certain that the kids that receive those meals every weekend are grateful for it too, whether they know it's a result of his efforts or not. We have a program at the food bank where we give thank you cans to people for their efforts on behalf of the food bank. Together, we can feed the hungry in our community. And this particular can, thank you for your support, Chief Brennan, chief of police, city of Wheat Ridge. The ingredients are generosity, kindness, compassion, caring, selflessness, and a pinch of goodwill. And with me, Mary Ross, is the individual that runs the backpack program for the Arvada Community Food Bank. And she's here to share our gratitude with the chief.
I've never received a can before, but I'm going to display this prominently in my office. This isn't just about me. There are several council members who have been involved in either contributing or helping with this. And I'd like to acknowledge Karen Adams and Rick for their donation. Tracy Langworthy has been very involved with the citizen committee that we have now that is helping with the fundraising and food drives. And council member Demott hosted a dinner pizza fundraiser last year for the Pennington program when we first started off. So my thanks to you. In addition, I'd like to thank the community members that are involved in this. Don Tonlin from Wheat Ridge Presbyterian, Bill Morgan from Crossroads Church. We also have Tom Rip from the Wheat Ridge Foundation, Loretta DeTuro from Enterprise Wheat Ridge has been a major player in terms of doing a lot of our fundraising efforts. This Saturday at Walmart, we'll be doing a fundraiser food drive at the Wheat Ridge Walmart all day Saturday. I'd also like to thank Wheat Ridge Fire and Arvada Fire for their assistance in, you know, helping with this program, as well as the Wheat Ridge Rotary and the Wheat Ridge Optimists Club have all been very, very involved. And I know I've left others, but we've truly made this a community effort. And I think it's a pretty successful program when you can say that you're able to feed 180 kids during the school year. So thank you.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. It's reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. I was told by the city clerk that that's not working right now, so he'll give you a time when you're approaching three minutes. So please step forward, display your last name for the record at the podium for public comment for any item not on the agenda.
Mayor's Dan Bradford, B-R-A-D-F-O-R-D. I'd like to speak for just a moment about the city of Wheat Ridge's rule to remove the right of a, I shouldn't say it's a right, but the ability for a homeowner to perform electrical work on his own property that he resides in. I'm certainly not speaking about people that own rental properties. That's a totally different ballgame. But our citizens should have the right to perform their own electrical work on the properties they live in. This will encourage home improvement. Failure to do this, people are going to work without a permit, and this becomes a much more dangerous situation because it's not monitored through inspection. I recently tried to obtain a permit through the city of Wheat Ridge to perform some work, and I was denied because I wanted to move a light switch. Doesn't make sense to me, but those are the rules. I really would like to ask the council reconsider this action. There are, that I can find, there are no other jurisdictions that totally restrict electrical work by homeowners. They have some rules and regulations, a few different hoops you have to jump through, but in almost all cases, it is allowed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please step forward for public comment. And display your last name for the record and your city and your address.
My name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L, and I'm a citizen of Wheat Ridge at 2995 Chase Street. I come here today to thank the wise voters of the city of Wheat Ridge for their overwhelmingly defeat of ballot item 2A earlier this month. We, the citizens of Wheat Ridge, understand the benefits of competition and individual franchise and its superior nature over monopolies. We also understand that economic and personal decisions are best handled by the individual, not by benevolent officials and bureaucrats. I hope the council will take further notice and focus on the appropriate roles and responsibilities of the city. As for the council and my fellow citizens' concerns of trash service, there are many options out there to amend the city code and to address these concerns. Most of these concerns probably even result from the city code or policy that's currently active, such as currently, by law, all trash must be picked up every week. Houses that may only have one or two residents, those who recycle, and those who household compost, which is currently prohibited by city policy, produce only a very small amount of trash that really needs to be picked up. Modifying the code may be to allow that every other week trash service could be picked up, and enforcing the numerous laws that deal with hoarding or noxious fumes if a citizen, by chance, would abuse this opportunity. These are just a few of the innovative options that are out there that do not include having a city-granted monopoly over trash service. I have many more options and ideas personally. I offer the council my service if they ever do decide to take up the topic of trash service in the city. And I would like to thank you for letting me speak here, and live free, Wheat Ridge. I offer my card to the city clerk.
Good evening. Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't have the details, but I understand that a task force of stakeholders is being formed to support the work towards creating our vision of a Main Street on 38th Avenue, which work I greatly support. I support the formation of a task force and look forward to the work of that group. As you know, many people, many stakeholders, council members, mayor, Wheat Ridge 2020 and other organizations have worked long and hard to bring about that vision. And so I'm excited to hear that there's yet further movement in that direction. I would encourage the inclusion of council members from District 1 and 2 in that task force, as well as allowing them to assist in the selection of stakeholders in that task force. We have a number of many great candidates to look at, graduates from our citizens academies, for example, and folks from the business district. So I look forward to that, and I'm pleased and thank you for that formation. Mayor, I believe that's your task force, so thank you for that. Wheat Ridge is well-positioned and starting to bring about the vision it's been working on for a long time. And I brought with me a publication from the Home Builders Association of Metro Denver. The cover story titled Hot Spots was an undertaking to interview prominent developers, mixed-use developers, home builders, and others in asking them where they thought opportunities lie and where they might be looking for opportunities in the future. And I have to tell you, in my 17 years at the Home Builders Association, this is the first time Wheat Ridge has made a publication. So I brought copies. I think that it's great news. We're on the map to a lot of folks that we haven't been, and I hope that we continue to work in the direction that will bring that kind of interest from quality developers, mixed-use developers, home builders, and others as they continue to look at the good work that we're doing here. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak under public comment? This time, council has the opportunity, or staff, to address some of the comments that were made under public comment. Do we have any comments or questions from council?
On the building code, it does concern me a little bit. I know we had talked about that on the task force and some other stuff. And rentals was brought up, and I thought that's where most of the permit went. Homeowners, though, it concerns me, and the reason that it concerns me is if we don't allow homeowners to do work on their own house, will they not take out a permit? And that's where we're going to run into the problem, is if they don't take out a permit, because they have to take out a permit and pay extra money for a licensed, and I remember at the time that their staff was talking about that was the pain on it, because a lot of times they would have to go out multiple times on an electrical inspection. But I think they're charging, I don't know what it is, $65 every time they go out, you know, for a reinspection. But it does somewhat concern me that maybe we need to take a look at that on the permit side on the electrical, just for homes. Rentals are a whole different other thing, but I just want to make sure that people get permits, and we have to make it accessible for them to get permits. So I don't know, maybe eventually, maybe the first of the year, council needs to revisit that in a study session.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I would move that we take, sometime after the first of the year, we take a look at it in a study session to see if we need to redo the permit process on electrical for residential.
Point of order, shouldn't that be done under elected officials that matters, not under citizens' right to speak?
There's no rule that says you cannot make a motion under public comment, and it's been done in the past. So unless you want to change your council rules, there's no reason why the motion can't stand. So we have a motion, it was seconded by council member Sang, to move for a discussion about electrical permits with licensing for residential property, homeowner property, sometime next year at a study session. Councilmember Adams?
I just have a question. Mike? Do you mean that you're concerned because they aren't licensed? Or I don't understand what you're...
No, my concern is that they have to have a license. It's just like this gentleman here. He's moving a socket, so he's got to pay a licensed electrician to come in and do that. Whereas, you know, it's your own house, and you should be able to do it. Now, what you want to do is take out a permit for that, so they'll come out and check it. And they would check any faulty wiring or anything at the time that they would come out. But the thing that concerns me is if we make it so stiff now and costly for them to have a licensed electrical contractor to come out, will they pull a permit? And that's when you're going to run into the problem if they don't pull a permit. So what I would rather see is, you know, someone be able to work on their own house, but pull a permit, so if there is a problem, they, you know, would be caught at the time of the inspection.
So we have a motion to look at this next year sometime at a study session. Please poll the council on the main motion.
I...
Oh, councilmember Berry, I didn't see your hand.
You know, we have a procedure in place to either, for someone to appeal the decision of the chief building official, or to look at issues like this, and that's the Building Code Advisory Board. What I'll ask you to do, or in a friendly amendment, or I'll make an amendment, is that have this issue go through the Building Code Advisory Board before it comes to a study session, because we did have that task force look at this in detail just recently. That did not go through the Building Code Advisory Board. So I think that that would be the best way to handle it. You know, after I received emails from Mr. Bradford, I just spent a few hours going through different building codes, through different cities, and different cities handle it different ways. And I found one that prohibits it exclusively, and others that either make you take a test to the same test that an electrical contractor would take, or they limit it to the amount of repair work or different kinds of repair work. So there's a whole, everyone is not the same. And I think it would be good to send it through the advisory board to look at those issues since they're supposed to be our technical experts.
No, that would be fine with me, because, you know, run it through there. But, you know, it's just like a lot of this stuff, you catch some things as it comes across and some issues, you know. And I think we need to be flexible enough that when we do catch something like that to possibly change it or at least take a look at it. So I'll accept that.
For the record, I think it'd probably be cleaner and staff would have better direction if you made an amendment.
All right. And I'd like to amend Mr. Stites' motion to have this issue discussed before the Building Code Advisory Board, before it comes to a city council study session.
Is there a second?
Second on the amendment.
We have a motion to amend, to add the Building Code Advisory Board recommendation to this before it comes to the study session, seconded by council member Reinhardt. Please poll the council on the amendment.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Please poll the council on the main motion as amended.
Motion carries eight to zero as well.
Thank you. Any other comments for public comment? Next on is to approval of the agenda, council member Jay. We're going to add an item, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add resolution number 63, put on my glasses here, 63-2010, a resolution establishing a public art fund to tonight's agenda.
As item seven?
Item seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to add a resolution 63-2010, seconded by council member Demott. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Council bill 18-2010, we're going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I'd like to introduce Council bill 18-2010, an ordinance revising Chapter 20 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Stormwater Quality and Control.
Move on to a staff presentation? Do we have anything else to add to the, do you want to read the executive summary, maybe? Okay.
An audit of the city's stormwater management program by the state health department will require minor revisions of the stormwater ordinance. The changes include, one, some additional definitions are being added to clarify the approved plan, SWMP, and the types of revisions, minor and major. Two, the list of allowable non-stormwater discharges is expanded to include all that are allowed by the state. Three, occasional incidental non-stormwater discharges are added to allow discharges from infrequent activities that do not pose a pollution threat if minimal care is taken. Four, maintenance and emergency repair activities are removed as being exempt from requiring a permit. Five, the requirement that a project inspector be certified has been removed to decrease the burden on the owners and contractors. Six, the response time for repairs or modifications is changed from seven days to immediately. Seven, procedures for minor and major modifications are added to provide better direction, owners and contractors. Eight, the language for the maintenance requirements for a permanent stormwater facility is revised to reflect the city's current practice. Nine, violations are being declared nuisances so that enforcement procedures in Chapter 15 of the city code can be utilized. And 10, some minor changes are made throughout for clarity and to correct errors. Now, if all this stuff was for clarity, I'll bet with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number two? I'm sorry, item number one.
Mr. Mayor, I'll assign an ordinance number real quick before we start. Council bill 18-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1473.
Thank, thank you. And do we have anybody here to speak under item number one? I misspoke. Move on to council discussion, questions on item number one. Close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council bill number 18-2010, an ordinance revising Chapter 20 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Stormwater Quality and Control on second reading, and that at take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, seconded by council member Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Amendments are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed on first reading. Item two is Council bill 19-2010. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm so happy to be introducing this tonight. Council bill 19-2010 is an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Wadsworth to a mixed-use commercial, MUC, Zone District, case number WZ1007. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council bill number 19-2010 as an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at the southeast corner of 44th Avenue and Wadsworth to a mixed-use commercial, MUC, Zone District on first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, December 13, 2010, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that at take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by council member Jay. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item three is resolution 62-2010. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Resolution number 62-20-10 is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $200,000 to Wheat Ridge 2020 for the purpose of funding programs that leverage the private and public funds supporting community economic development. This request was originally brought to city council in April this year and was delayed in part, I believe, as I recall correctly, in part because of the status, we wanted to monitor the status of funds coming into the city at that time. And then it was brought back to council study session on October 18, 2001, and the decision was made to bring this forward after we had settled the 2011 budget, so we had some context for making a final decision for the funding requests for this year, year 2010. There's three components, there's three components to this request. $159,000 to support the home investment loan program and building up business loan programs which are administered through Wheat Ridge 2020. $16,000 to support the implementation of the CRP recommendations at 38th Avenue corridor. And this is part of our ongoing program to try and get 38th Avenue back and going, and to support the staff work done by Wheat Ridge 2020 in concert with the city staff. And then $25,000 pledged to matching donations granted to Wheat Ridge 2020 to basically support their underlying operations. With that introduction, I think we're going to take public testimony at this time.
It's been requested that we take public testimony before a motion is made. That's different than normal council rules. Anybody have a problem with taking public comment before a motion is made under decisions, resolutions, and motions? That'll stand by unanimous consent. We'll move on to public comment for item three. Please step forward, display your last name for the record, and state your city and your address. Just please step forward, and you can form a line if you wish behind Mr. Delait.
Hi, my name is Brian Delait, D-E-L-A-E-T. I live at 11830 West 35th Avenue. And I just wanted to come up and, well, in the first half of this decade, the folks that sit up here made a really good decision in coming up with the NRS and did some really good work in creating Wheat Ridge 2020 to be a partner with the city. Many of you are still sitting up there are the ones that helped to make that decision. But Wheat Ridge 2020 has had a really big impact over the course of its short history. In 2005, five short years ago, 2020 started. And originally, the commitment was that city council was going to support 2020 to the tune of $1.5 million a year. Obviously, in the meantime, a recession has intervened, and that's, you know, money is hard to come by. I just wanted to come up here and remind you that the role of Wheat Ridge 2020 is to be a partner with the city, and that council formed 2020 as a private corporation that is designed to work both as an economic development corporation and a community development corporation to help advance the city of Wheat Ridge in ways that are a little bit more nimble and can work without some of the restraints that government rightfully has upon it. I would strongly encourage you to approve the funding tonight. And I was the first president of the board of Wheat Ridge 2020, and I know all along we've really, we, Wheat Ridge 2020 has striven to work closely with council and work with the city, and I hope that we can continue to do so.
Hi, my name is Kelly Bailey, B-A-I-L-L-I-E, and I reside at 4825 Wadsworth Boulevard in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. And my husband and I have purchased the house... And my husband and I have purchased the house, um, basically I seventy in Wadsworth, um, and took on quite a, a project. We did a pretty major addition to the house. Um, we did some stuccos, some roofing, some windows. We are finally in landscape phase, thank goodness. Um, but we wouldn't have been able to do this investment, um, without the support of Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. Uh, we were one of the early loan recipients, um, and to more than match it, um, we invested more than two hundred thousand dollars ourselves. So, a pretty good return on the investment of the city to, um, I think, create a, I hope, a fairly attractive entrance, um, into the city of Wheat Ridge, and will continue to be a great partner. Um, in addition, when we look at the Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty program, I think the biggest thing for our family and for me personally is, is community and economic development. Um, our kids now go to school here in Wheat Ridge. We go to Willmore Davis. I'm the PTA president. We're working with E-Wheat Ridge to get our students more involved with local businesses. Um, so, it's the community development piece that you have gotten me bought into, um, and that's, I think, the ultimate goal of Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty, is not just to have lots of pretty buildings, is to have people that are involved and engaged in the city, and that's ultimately what's going to change it. So, for me, that's the biggest investment that Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty did for our family, was engage us in Wheat Ridge, even though it's been hard sometimes, um, but we're persevering, and, um, we're excited to be, um, part of Wheat Ridge. And we look forward to having breakfast with you, Jerry. We won.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I am Denise Waddell, W.A.D.D.E.L.L., and I'm a business owner at forty-three-fifty Wadsworth Boulevard. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the council, um, for the recently approved allocations in the two thousand and eleven budget to Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. Now, the request, um, before you this evening, as Council Representative Reinhardt indicated, is a supplemental request for the two thousand and ten budget. And I'd like to give a, a brief recap of this request and how it relates to the budget of Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. Um, this request goes back a ways. It started in August of two thousand and nine. Um, Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty requested seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding in the city's two thousand and ten budget. Um, the final budget passed, um, without funds allocated to Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. It was our understanding that due to the uncertainty of future revenues and to effectively balance the city budget, um, that funds could not be allocated, um, at that time. It was suggested that Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty make a supplemental request later, um, in the year. The Board of Directors for Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty made adjustments to our budget based upon, um, that information. Initially, we had projected, um, program allocations of nine hundred thousand dollars, um, of which five hundred and fifty thousand dollars were earmarked to the loan programs. Um, other allocations included a development fund, community education, neighborhood grants, community branding and marketing. Uh, we adjusted our budget accordingly and projected total program allocations to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, based on that, we, um, resubmitted our request to, um, City Council in April two thousand and ten. Our request was for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, to support our loan programs, and, um, this request was not brought to a vote at that time. So, in September of two thousand and ten, we adjusted that request to the two hundred thousand dollars that you're hearing tonight, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the loan programs, sixteen thousand dollars for work on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and twenty-five thousand dollars in matching funds. Um, as I said, this is a request that is being considered tonight. Um, to date, we have funded a hundred and eight thousand dollars in loan requests for the two thousand and ten year. Um, in, um, October of two thousand and ten, Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty put forth its request for the city's two thousand and eleven budget process. From our budgeting standpoint, this request was seen as an addition to this two hundred thousand dollar request. Um, so, the combination of the two budget requests for two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the two years. Earlier this month, the city of Wheat Ridge passed its two thousand and eleven budget. A hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars was allocated for Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. Hundred and six thousand of this is for loan programs, twenty-five thousand dollars to support our work on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. If this request is approved tonight, the total allocation for Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty in the years two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven would be three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry N.E.A.L.O.N., and I'm a recipient of the, uh, seventy-five thousand dollar loan program through Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty, uh, two years ago. Uh, we had a, pretty much, a business on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, it's been there forever since the building was built, and I think fifty-nine, and everybody drove by, nobody saw it. So, we used the funds to make our building a little bit more outstanding, uh, with the additional money. I mean, you know, I'm old school, we saved money to do our remodel, but, uh, the additional money let us do some additional signings, some additional lighting. Uh, we were not, um, cash or capital strapped also, which really helped quite a bit with the recession coming in right after we did the remodel. Funds obviously are tight, so that helped, you know, in that aspect also. Uh, Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty's been, uh, great. They work with the Wheat Ridge Business District, which, you know, they have matching funds also available. So, they're, they're very key in the city. Uh, I think they do a, an awesome job, so, um, I just want to say that I think you should really look at funding them as much as you possibly can, and look at it as, as an investment in Wheat Ridge, especially along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, which is in dire need of some, uh, some help. So, more you can do, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Hoppe, H.O.P.P.E. Um, currently, I live in Denver. Do you need my address, though? No? Okay. Um, I am the owner and managing partner for Molly Marie Properties and Compass Construction. We just purchased the building on, uh, seventy-twenty West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and I do believe if I call it the ugly building, you'll know which one I'm talking about. Um, before we purchased the building, we had found out, we had heard about the Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty program, and went and met with Britta and talked about the different, um, opportunities that that loan could offer us. We were looking to purchase a building in Denver, um, and had looked at a few different properties, but as we drove up and down Thirty-Eighth Avenue and looking at it for a couple of weeks before we decided to pull the trigger, we saw a lot of opportunity there, and a lot of opportunity to be part of what can be a major revitalization of that area. The upper part of Thirty-Eighth has some major heavy competition with the east side of Thirty-Eighth. We won't talk about them too much, but we, um, with all of the Highlands, and I think that, um, Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth can be an extension of that area, which then brings more business into Wheat Ridge. Um, we, we would not have purchased the building there if it weren't not for the Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty building up business program. We are so excited. We've, um, done exterior stucco, concrete, um, we're working on finishing up the stucco, which probably in the next couple of weeks, you'll see some colors going up on it, plantings, excited about that, the colors, some plantings. Um, the concrete itself was just a major change to the building, but we also will end up having, uh, space for another commercial storefront space that we'll be leasing out, and then we have an, another, it can be, um, mixed use, upstairs. We've also filled all the units in the back that are residential units, so they're no longer vacant or have, um, there were some issues with some residents there, and so we have some good, clean, positive people living there. And, um, we are really looking forward to being a pioneer in having a vibrant Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Everyone I talk to that says, "Oh, my business is outgrowing my space," I tell them, "Go on Thirty-Eighth and find a place and get there, and go talk to the Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty program." I would really like to encourage you to please continue funding the twenty-twenty program. I think that it is an immense piece of being able to bring that to the vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Abbott, one-zero-seven-eight-zero, West Thirty-Fifth Avenue, Wheat Ridge?
Explain your last name for the record.
A.B.B.O.T.T. It does, I get, I lose a B or a T once in a while, it's true. Uh, well, thank you, everyone, tonight. It's nice to see everybody here, as usual. I'm here to speak in, in favor of the Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty, uh, request. Um, I think it's a reasonable and prudent request. Uh, I believe Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty, since it was formed by City Council, has, uh, has been a success, given the extremely difficult times and situations that, uh, have befallen us in our, in our adventure over the last three or four years. So, I think, uh, twenty-twenty is a valuable tool that the city needs to retain, and of course, to do that, it has to be funded adequately. Uh, my opinion all the way along has been that it would not be realistic for twenty-twenty to become a hundred percent self-funded in, uh, even in the best of times, uh, in, uh, four or five years. So, I, I think that the city is prudent and well-advised to continue funding of twenty-twenty. They've done a remarkable job on, uh, given what they've, uh, had to deal with. Uh, this last year, the current year, two thousand and ten, uh, obtaining the million and a half dollars of federal money to rehabilitate these, uh, foreclosures, six actual houses occurring over here on the east side of town, i- is a boon to all the neighbors that live on those blocks and, uh, and all the people around. And I don't believe the city had available to it any other entity which could have realistically stepped in and accomplished what the staff of twenty-twenty, uh, did, related to obtaining this million and a half dollars and these six actual renovations that are occurring. Uh, and I don't believe the city will have that capability with the ways I've understood of being discussed, uh, to create some sort of an alternative mechanism to, uh, deal with these sort of situations. So, I, I think twenty-twenty's a valuable tool to the citizens and to, to the, uh, government of Wheat Ridge, and, uh, we should be funded this year, at least at the level requested. Uh, matter of fact, I think you could double it, and it would be prudent, but I would settle for the request. It's been well thought out, well-created, well-documented, uh, there's no fat on the thing. So, uh, you know, I argued for years that Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty was becoming what I called staff-centric, uh, but I can tell you that the situation is turning, and, uh, the staff now is working for the board and is, uh, accomplishing, uh, great things. So, again, thank you for the consideration of, uh, of this twenty-twenty request.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Britta Fisher. Britta Fisher, F.I.S.H.E.R. And I live in District Two at Thirty-Ninth and Harlan, and I also have the honor of being the Executive Director for Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty, a proud partner with the city of Wheat Ridge. Um, I'm also a Broncos fan, so I'll try to be very brief. Um, a couple of things, just to remind you, you've heard some great stories from some of our clients tonight and some of our leaders. Um, I want to start by saying, we need this request. Um, when we made our two thousand and eleven budget request, we actually made that after we first put forward the two thousand and ten supplemental request. So, we made smaller numbers for the two thousand and eleven request in anticipation of also getting some supplemental funding in two thousand and ten. Um, so, if you look at what you approved for the two thousand and eleven budget, primarily the loan program and a little bit for Thirty-Eighth, that's what you see in the supplemental budget as well, um, request, and that is needed, um, for our program. In fact, uh, Denise, who spoke about Molly Marie Properties, we closed on that loan in anticipation of funding, so that means of the hundred thousand dollars that was approved for two thousand and eleven, you know, that's fifty thousand that we've already got earmarked for a loan, um, let alone the other loans that we funded from our own funds. So, we do need this funding. Secondly, we know how to use the funding well. Um, I think you've seen the impact from projects like Crest Kitchen and Bath, um, the transformation that you'll be seeing over the next couple of months at seventy-twenty West Thirty-Eighth, um, seeing that half-done building that had permits in its windows since I moved to Wheat Ridge six years ago, finally becoming something with a business in it again. That is great impact, and we do that, um, with very little, um, overhead for that loan program. Second, and the other thing that's important about that loan program, both the residential and the business loans are targeted along the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor, which we've made a priority. So, you're getting targeted impact with that. Which leads to the second part of our request, which is support for the Community Revitalization Partnership Program and its implementation. Um, we did a lot of work with focus groups and others and have done studies. It's time for action, it's time to mobilize for action, and that takes some people on the ground. And so, we need some resources for that. We've been expending that at Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty throughout the year two thousand and ten, um, and could use your support in that area. And then finally, we've asked for matching funds, twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, matching funds are a great way to leverage additional investment in our organization. When a donor knows that their funds will be matched, it gives them that extra incentive. In fact, I want to also encourage you to look at Colorado Gives Day, uh, which is December eighth, which just happens to be the fifth anniversary of the incorporation of Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. So, first of all, congratulate all yourselves that we've, we've made it fifty, five years since, uh, incorporation. And that, that day is to encourage people to give to charities, um, that are making an impact in their local community. Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty is one of those charities, and businesses have donated to a fund, including one of our strong partners, First Bank, um, to help match those funds that day. So, that you can see the business community does that, um, it would be great to see, uh, the city help to do that for Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty for this fourth quarter. And what does that matching funds get you? Um, we've accomplished a lot, and so I just want to take a few seconds to go over a few things. Tom mentioned one point six million dollars in the neighborhood stabilization program. You're seeing homes, um, be beautified right before you. Our first home sold in a matter of days. The second home is under contract, ready to be closed. Uh, the other four are under, um, construction and should be finishing, uh, as the end of the year approaches. Secondly, we educate citizens. Um, we have our Planning and Development Academy. We've worked on issues like height and density to educate everyone about why these policy changes are, uh, so important, and that's the kind of partnership we have with you at the city. Third, we have the ability to attract these businesses like Compass Construction. What a perfect fit, a building that needed so much work, and a construction company has come and is leading investment on Thirty-Eighth, and now we have people like Denise and Nathan who are going to be involved in the long-term for Thirty-Eighth Avenue. We are also that hub for a movement, for Thirty-Eighth Avenue, for developers, investors. People stop by, they want to know, how is Wheat Ridge moving forward? We can help connect them with the city staff, connect them with elected officials, connect them, um, to different resources throughout the community, and we want to continue being that hub. And finally, we do a lot of branding for the community and engagement of the citizens. Many of you were just at our, our key event, wines and dines. Thanks for those of you who came and supported us, and those who supported but could not attend, thank you so much for that. But events like that expose people to the great dining options that we have, encourage them to spend money here in Wheat Ridge. Um, we also have lots of opportunities for people to be involved in committees, and we even have a kickball team. So, we do it all, and we think that that's worth supporting. So, tonight, I just want to reiterate, we need the funds, we know how to use them well, and you get a lot for the money that you put into Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. We hope that you'll fund our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
Uh, thank you. I think that, um, I just want to, prior to making a motion, make a couple of comments that this request comes with, uh, three distinct, uh, components, and I'd, you know, speak to just second each of the issues before I make a motion. Um, the hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, support the home investment loan program and build-up business loan programs, um, is something, uh, that I think those are very good programs and worth, uh, continuing support. However effective the first of the year, we have already supported, uh, those programs, and I, just speaking for myself, would be very interested, um, if necessary, and if this next batch of funds are well-used in entertaining a motion mid-year, if we have the money to continue to phone those to a greater degree. So, I'm not planning to be supporting that. I, I think that the sixteen thousand dollar, uh, support the implementation of the recommendations for the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor study is clearly, uh, central focus of some of the areas we want to invest our moment, our, our, our money, and, um, their contributing and working with the staff, I think, is critical to the success of that program, so I'll be making the motion- Quarter Study is clearly a central focus of some of the areas we want to invest our money, and their contributing and working with the staff, I think, is critical to the success of that program. So I'll be making the motion to include those funds. And I firmly believe that our matching contributions are a critical statement to supporting the program that is 2020 with those matching funds. So my colleagues will certainly have every opportunity to change my initial motion, but if the motion's ordered, I'll be glad to make it.
Motion's in order. Please state the amount that you're approving.
Yeah. I move to approve Resolution 62-2001, a resolution approving a supplemental budget in the amount of $41,000, $16,000 of which is to support the implementation of the CRP recommendations for the 38th Avenue Quarter, and $25,000 to pledge match donations and grants for Wheat Ridge 2020 in the fourth quarter of 2010.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's less than the resolution had anticipated, seconded by Councilmember Demott. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Stites?
Yeah, you know, one of the reasons that we stalled this was we didn't know if we had any money. Do we have funds available for this? I know it's going to have to come out of reserves, but...
Yeah, revenues are up this year through third quarter of 2010. Sales taxes up about 3% compared to last year, and our overall general fund revenues up about 2% higher than projected.
Based upon Davis's motion, I'll vote against it. And I'm going to vote against it, one, because I think the $159,000 is money better spent. It's been a fantastic program for the homeowners and businesses. So I, if whatever way this goes, will come back in with a motion for the $159,000. Now, as far as the $16,000 and the $25,000, I will not support that. I haven't supported that all along. I think $16,000, once again, being spent on 38th Avenue is a waste. That $16,000 should go to brick and mortar from here on in. I would like to see, like, flags, some type of advertising or whatever, and I think that would be a great start, $16,000. The $25,000 in matching pledges, I can never support because we're dealing with taxpayers' money, and we cannot spend it unless we know where it's going. I absolutely know where it's going. So with that in mind, I'll vote again. I will not support the $16,000, the $25,000, but I will come back in with a motion for the $159,000.
Okay. Councilmember Berry, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question for Britta, because from what I look in the comments, it basically says they have a $50,000 loan application for a business on 38th Avenue and a couple of other loans. So I'm wondering if, you know, you said that they have, we've given them $159,000 for 2011, but I'm just wondering whether, if we don't give them additional funds, a lot of that's already going to be spent come January 1st. Yes, please.
You asked about, what have we spent of what we anticipated? So 2011 request has $106,000 for the two loan programs, and $6,000 is for administration, $100,000 directly for the loans themselves. In anticipation of either supplemental funding or the 2011 funding, we went ahead and closed on the loan for Molly Marie Properties. That was the $50,000 loan application that was before us when I wrote that memo back in September. So we have gone ahead and closed that in anticipation of funds, because our loans are reimbursement loans, so there's withdrawals. So we anticipated some of the draws being in 2011, or potentially, if we got 2010 supplemental funds, we could use them immediately for that. So if we only got the $100,000, then yes, basically, half of it's already committed. And I would also mention that Janice and others on 38th have been very good ambassadors for us, and I am talking with several business owners on 38th right now. I am hoping for some more applications presently.
Thank you very much. With that, you know, I support the additional $159,000, because I do think that they've brought in some businesses, and they need to have somewhat of a larger pool to be able to bring in and help some businesses, additional businesses during 2011.
So are you going to...
Just making, just a general comment on that.
Councilmember Sang?
Well, I will not support just giving them the 16 and the 25. And I will not support just giving them the 159. My feeling is, and I think that, I've said this before, but I think that we did a disservice to Wheat Ridge 2020 when we did not fully fund them like we had given our word that we would whenever it was formed. And I believe that even though it is taxpayers' money, and I agree with Mike on that, the taxpayers did approve this funding for Wheat Ridge 2020 as economic development. So if the two motions fail, I will come back with a motion for the $200,000.
Any other comments on the main motion right now, before we pull the council? So right now, we're voting on the resolution that's for $41,000 for funding for Wheat Ridge 2020, $41,000 only. Please pull the council on that motion.
Motion fails 6 to 2, with Councilmembers Reinhardt and Demott voting yes.
Mr. Stites?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we fund the $159,000 to support the Home Investment Loan Program and Building Up Business Loan.
You have a motion, or, sorry, a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. And that was for $159,000 only. Ms. Sang?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 62-2010, a resolution approving a supplemental budget in appropriation in the amount of $200,000 for Wheat Ridge 2020.
Second.
We have a motion for approval with the full amount, seconded by Councilmember Berry. Discussion on the main motion? Please pull the council.
Motion carries 6 to 2, with Councilmembers Demott and Stites voting no.
Thank you. Item four, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 61-2010, a resolution approving agreement between the City of Lakewood and the City of Wheat Ridge for crime lab, crime scene services, and authorizing payment of $66,400. In 2006, the Wheat Ridge Police Department entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Lakewood Police Department to provide forensic crime lab services. This agreement was prompted by recommendations made in the 2004 Police Department Organizational Assessment, which recommended civilianizing the department's crime lab and using the two sworn crime lab detective positions for other police functions. The disbursement of $66,400 is made to the City of Wheat Ridge in four quarterly payments. Is a motion in order?
A motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 61-2010, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lakewood and the City of Wheat Ridge for crime lab, crime scene services, and authorizing payment in the amount of $66,400.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please pull the council.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
Thank you. Item five is election of mayor pro tem. I believe council has a ballot that they need to fill out, and if you have completed that, we'll pass it down to the city clerk. So please pass your ballots down. No peeking. Have the Jeopardy music. Jeopardy music. Mr. Dahl, just to clarify again, if there's a tie on these secret ballots, do I break a tie on that? What do you want?
I have results. Ladies and gentlemen, the council has nominated four nominations in favor of Tracy Langworthy, and four nominations in favor of Davis Reinhardt.
Oh, that's it? That's your ballot? So you have four for Councilmember Langworthy and four for Councilmember Reinhardt?
That's correct.
I guess I'd have to go with Councilmember Langworthy. So now we need a motion. Mr. Stites?
Mr. Mayor, I move to ratify the election of Tracy Langworthy to mayor pro tem.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Berry?
I just want to make one comment. You know, recently, Mrs. Langworthy proposed some council rule changes that require someone who, and they were adopted by council, that require someone who was interested in being mayor pro tem to make that announcement fully known to council, and to tell why they, what qualities that they have and why they deserve to be mayor pro tem. So I'm somewhat surprised and somewhat disappointed in that I never received a call or an email from Mrs. Langworthy telling me that she was interested in being mayor pro tem, and explaining to me why she was the best person for the job. So considering that recent rule change, it's very disappointing to me.
Ms. Langworthy?
You know, I did try to bring this up in study sessions, and I really felt like, on many levels, when I tried to bring these things up, I was kind of, it seemed like people didn't really want to support this. And I did try to bring it up at a study session about this, but it just, I really feel like we are, we keep on letting things from the past get in our way, and I don't disagree. But if I don't feel like I'm going to be heard, then it is a challenge for me, and it's something that I would have to overcome as well. But it's something that I think that I'm being aware that I have that problem as well, and I see that it is on council that we all need to work towards. And I'm not saying that I was perfect, but also, at the meeting that I brought this up, there were several people who left before we could even finish the discussion. To me, that says that we still have people who aren't willing to hear what I have to say. And what I really want for Wheat Ridge and for us on council is to start treating each other with the respect that the citizens who elected us into office should start treating each other with. And I feel like we still aren't getting that, and we don't even get it amongst our own council members, which I see as a problem, and which is why I did put my name into this. And I know we had a discussion about this last year, and I just really didn't know that, or I really didn't feel like I was going to get heard again. And I feel very frustrated when I don't feel like I'm going to get heard, because that's what we're here for. We're supposed to be listening to what the other people have to say. We're here to hear what the citizens have to say. And I just really want to have a better year where we start respecting each other completely, and it can't be a one-sided thing. It can't be me listening to what other people have to say and not really hearing what I have to say. But it has to be the same with all councilors. I mean, with Joey, Wanda, all of us, if I have something to say, they should have, they should at least respect enough to hear what I'm saying, and for me as well. And I don't feel like we've done a really great job of that, and that's why I put my name in it, because I really do want to try to figure out how to make that work and make it work for me as well. So I'm not going to disagree. I don't feel like I've done the best job about it, but I am trying, and I hope to move forward. I really want to work at it more.
Ms. Adams?
I also did not receive a phone call or knew there was an interest directly, was not shown that courtesy by Mrs. Langworthy. I do not recall that she has not been heard anymore. At our study sessions, we bring open discussion at all times, and her voice is heard and needs to be heard, just like the eight of us. I will be needing to leave the meeting because I have a flight in an hour and a half, and I will ask to be excused at this time. And I did feel a need to stay for the vote of our Wheat Ridge 2020 organization, and I apologize for needing to leave. There's absolutely no motive behind it, other than my flight's going to leave real soon. So I've got to scoot.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before Ms. Jay?
Tracy, I agree that we all need to be heard. And I'm hoping that our year forward, our years forward, will continue, that we will have more of a collaborative effort. And I would have enjoyed a call from you, but I still will support you, as we all will, in going forward. And I know that there's some council rules coming up again, changes, and I'll be supporting those too.
Any other comments? Let me pass the gavel here real quick. I wanted to make a comment. The council rules that were changed talked about a secret ballot, and they talked about, then we would vote on a main motion, and also talked about that it encouraged folks to vote for the person who was nominated, which you just did. But there really wasn't anything in that council rule change that said that you had to call anybody and make your pitch to them, either publicly or privately. So while the council rules did change, I don't, I looked at them today before we came to the meeting, just to make sure that I wasn't going to miss anything tonight, and there was nothing in there that said you had to call anybody. I mean, this was the nomination process. The nomination process is by secret ballot, and there's a vote. So I guess I'm confused why, all of a sudden, there's comments being made that they weren't called. It's really not part of the council rules, maybe common courtesy, but not part of the council rules. Ms. Langworthy?
I did try to bring that up in the discussion at a study session. It wasn't, at that point when I brought that up, is when people kind of just started leaving and not even, you know, before this. So this is kind of my point. I mean, I did try to bring that up, I did try to talk about it, but I had people leave before we could even really finish the discussion, and so it never did go further. But that's part of the things that, you know, but anyways, it's neither here nor there. It wasn't put into it, but it never really fully got discussed.
Ms., I'll come back to Ms. Sang and then Ms. Berry.
I just want to say that I did get a call from both, and I appreciate the call that I got. But I agree with the mayor that we, it is not something that is required of us to do. I think that Tracy is correct in the fact that, of what she says of what's happened in the past. I just would hope, there are three of us that have one year left on council, and I would hope that in that year, that we can move forward and get rid of the pettiness and trying to outdo one another with a gotcha, and really sit down and discuss things to do what is the best for the city. And that's what we were elected to do, and I think at times, we've been lay-waied by other things coming into view, and I agree with Tracy. And I think personally, I felt that Tracy would be the one probably that could make that happen. I didn't see it in the last year, so that's the reason, my decision was to support Tracy, is I felt that she deserved a chance to try to see to make that happen.
Ms. Berry?
Yeah, I just need to correct. Mrs. Langworthy proposed rule changes, and some of them were adopted and some weren't. And one of the ones that she proposed was that people had to... was the best person for the job rather than just some of us. I don't think that's the right way to move forward. We'll get past this, but I'm just saying I was very disappointed not to have been informed like other members of council were. And that's that.
Mr. Stites?
I call for the question.
We have a call for the question that takes six votes to pass. Please pull, oh, we need a second. We need a second.
Second.
Please pull the council and call for the question, take six votes, and does stop debate.
Motion carries, motion carries seven to zero to call a question.
Mr. Stites, you already made your motion. Second, Councilmember Reinhardt, second for Councilmember Langworthy, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six, Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to adopt the 2011 regular city council meeting calendar. The calendar of city council meetings is adopted by motion of the city council yearly. Adopting the regular meeting calendar for the year is more efficient and enables the mayor, council, and staff to schedule other events and travel in advance. The council will be able to amend the schedule by motion throughout the year if necessary. The proposed 2011 city council calendar includes study sessions on the first and third Monday of each month and regular council meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month. It is recommended that certain city council meetings that conflict with observed city holidays or other known events during the calendar be canceled. Included in the attached calendar for your convenience are the regularly scheduled board and commission meetings and all observed city holidays. These events, however, are not adopted or changed by this council motion. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to adopt the 2011 city council regular meeting calendar.
Second.
We have a motion for approval for the calendar, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Resolution 63-2010. Councilmember Jay?
Resolution 63-210, a resolution establishing a public art fund. Council previously enacted Article II of Chapter 18 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws entitled Public Art Management, which establishes goals, policies, and guidelines for the acquisition, ownership, display, or sitting, conservation, and disposal of public works of art. Chapter 18 of the code does not specify funding sources for public art and is in the public interest to identify sources of funding for the acquisition of public art by the city. I'll read the resolution. Whereas, oh, we're good?
That sounds good.
All right. The city council, whereas the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge has previously enacted Article II of Chapter 18 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws entitled Public Art Management, and whereas Article II of Chapter 18 establishes goals, policies, and guidelines for the acquisition, ownership, display, or sitting, conservation, and disposal of public works of art, and whereas the purposes of Article II of Chapter 18 of the code and this resolution, public art means works of art acquired and held by the city, and whereas Article II of Chapter 18 of the code does not specify funding sources for public art, and whereas the council finds it is in the public interest to identify sources of funding for acquisition of public art by the city, now therefore be it resolved by the Wheat Ridge City Council. It is hereby created a public art fund into which shall be deposited the following revenues: 1% of the total amount received by the city for plan review, building permit fees, and use tax charged in connection with all private site development as defined in Code Section 26-123, having an anticipated construction cost of $100,000 or greater; 1% of the total amount received by the city for development review fees charged in connection with all private site development as defined in Code Section 26-123, having an anticipated construction cost of $100,000 or greater; any funds which may be donated by private parties, such other funds as the council may direct. Section two, disposition of public art fund. The Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission, as constituted from time to time, shall recommend to the city council the expenditure of monies in the public art fund for the new acquisition, ownership, display, or sitting, conservation, and disposal of public works of art. In making its recommendations, the cultural commission shall follow the requirements of Article II of Chapter 18 of the Code of Laws. The city council may, in its sole discretion, include the recommendations of the cultural commission in an appropriations measure or measures. This resolution shall be effective upon passage.
Thank you. Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 63-2010, a resolution establishing a public art fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the resolution. Ms. Berry?
I just want to say, and I would ask that this city clerk include my comments in the record because I think they're important. I think this is an important issue, and I'm all for this. I just have some issues with the way this is currently worded or lack of information in it. We discussed this at the last study session a week ago, and I received actually the final copy of this today and a draft copy earlier this week. And the thing, just as Mr. Stites says, it's all public funds and it's taxpayer dollars, and he wants to know exactly where they're going. There's no fiscal impact associated with this ordinance, so I have no clue what will be the estimated revenues that would probably, that would need to, that would go into this fund. And I don't know how that would, if it's a significant amount of money, how that would be supplemented on the department budgets that this comes out of, because this would come out of department budgets to go into the public art fund. I think it wouldn't be that difficult for staff to put together some fiscal impact, but I can't vote for anything with a fiscal impact without my knowing what the dollar figures are. I think it would only take a few weeks to get this additional materials together so that we could all make an informed decision. But right now, without having a fiscal impact associated with this, I can't support it. The other thing is, in looking at this, you know, I've done some research in other areas, and one of the things in it is it's based upon a 1% of the anticipated, excuse me, I've had a cold all week, construction costs of $100,000 or greater. And looking at what other cities have done, this ordinance includes, doesn't include any definition of construction costs, and other cities have had to define this for obvious reasons. And so construction costs often include engineering costs, interest costs during the construction project. I think unless we really define exactly what's going to go into construction costs, we could have anticipated revenues going into this fund and being taken out of other funds without actually fully understanding what we're doing here. So I think we need to take some time to do this correctly, and we need to define construction costs and what that 1% is. We need to look at our history here in terms of developments over $100,000, once we know what our definition of construction costs are. And we need to have a great, we need to have an estimate of fiscal impacts and a determination of if it's significant enough on department budgets, how we're going to fill that gap.
Any other comments before we uphold the council? We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang.
I'm sorry. I'm, you know, in the past, we've had other issues come to the floor where council members have asked for delays and on occasion have supported them regardless of the issue on the table. So I guess in this case, I do think this came forward more quickly than some others, and I would support a motion to delay through study session to get a more complete drafting of the information. If there's other support other than Karen and I, I would move to delay, to after the next study session when the additional information was provided.
Ms. Berry? Was there a second?
Oh, you, you, Ms.
I'd move to delay till after the next study session when there'd be additional data.
Second.
Mr. Demott? Let me pass the gavel again. I'm going to ask council really not to forego this, or not to actually go to a study session on this again. This has been talked about quite a bit. Really, the fiscal impact is quite clear. For every $100,000 of permit fees raised by the city of Wheat Ridge, for example, it's $1,000 coming out of that, going into that fund. So if the city of Wheat Ridge had $100,000 of use tax, but the aggregate is still going to be 1%. So if you had $200,000 of permit fees on a certain project, it's $2,000. So the, really, the fiscal impact is $1,000 for every $100,000 of permit fees that comes forward. This was discussed at a couple other study sessions in the past after a regular council meeting, and this was a, this was really drafted well by Councilmember Jay and the city attorney and Ms. Patrick Goff talking about this over the weekend a little bit. I think that at some point, we have to move things together and move things on and move things forward instead of studying and studying and studying. We need that least restrictive environment, whether it's public art or building codes or whatever else comes forward, and be able to address it in a timely manner. This has been discussed for five years and longer, and this is not going to cause any kind of problem with the city of Wheat Ridge if it passes tonight and that we get a $100,000 project tomorrow morning, so.
I'd like to respond. It may have been talked about for five years, but the drafting was done over the weekend, and I don't see anything here that lends to that much urgency. One of my councilors has asked for it. I'm going to, having heard that once, I think there was time to look at those issues. That's all.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone. Ms. Berry?
Yeah, I just want to say, with all due respect, yeah, I know how 1% of $100,000 is $1,000. I can do that math in my head. I have currently no idea how many projects we historically have over $100,000 and what part of a construction project that will be assessed to. Does it include all construction costs associated with the project or not? I don't know how many of those that we have, so I don't know what the total estimated revenues will be into that fund. If you do, I would like to hear it, but I don't.
Well, if I had a crystal ball, I could tell you too, but I don't think anybody could really tell you until it actually happens. Ms. Berry?
I think, point of order, I think that we're.
Well, all I can say is, here we go again. We're going to study something to death and never get anything done. I would encourage council to vote for this tonight. This is a positive thing for the city of Wheat Ridge, a positive thing to beautify it. It's not going to, it's not going to be brain damage on how this is going to be done, and I just think that we have a tendency to study everything to death and to talk everything to death. So I would encourage the council to vote for this tonight to move forward.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to a study session, seconded by Councilmember Berry. Please poll the council on the postponement.
My microphone is not on. My microphone wasn't on.
We have our main motion as stated by Councilmember Jay for approval, was seconded. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Berry voting no.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city man.
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Not for me. Thanks.
Nothing this evening. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It should be a great family time this year. This is an excellent time to relocate your business or your home to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, talk to one of us or city staff. More importantly, right now, along with Thanksgiving, please try to do a positive thing for your community, your block, your family. Check and make sure that your neighbors or any college kids or whatever have a place to go for Thanksgiving. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Nothing tonight, thank you. Well, actually, I have one thing. I'd like to, I just want to wish Tracy well and say that I'm here to support her if she needs it or it's useful as a mayor pro tem.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Other than wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, I think that's it. I hope we all have a safe and happy week and watch out for the kids that are out of school from Wednesday on.
Councilmember Jay?
Yes, I believe we're still allowed to reply to public comment in regard to Ms. Calamino's commentary regarding 38th Avenue and the task force that's being formed. Ms. Calamino suggested we add council members to that task force, and I believe that that should happen, and I would like to move that we add a council member from both District One and District Two to that task force.
What names? Are you asking me to do it?
You do it. What names? Oh, you mean, oh, you mean the name, oh, I see what you mean.
You don't have to make a motion for that. We can get two people on there, one from District One and one from District Two.
I think that would start as a voluntary basis.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to add, how many?
Two council members, both from District One and District Two.
Two total or four?
Two.
Okay. Motion for two council members, one from District One and one from District Two to be on the 38th Avenue Task Force, seconded by, who was the second? Ms. Berry?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Jay?
Oh, happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Berry?
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Mr. Demott?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate the Wheat Ridge High School football farmers on two more playoff wins and wish them luck, I believe it's Friday night, maybe Saturday morning, on their next game, hopefully getting them into the finals. Go Farmers!
Ms. Berry? That's what I thought you did. Ms. Sang?
Well, as a farmer alum and I, I second what Mr. Demott said, and I also, and I also echo what Councilmember Stites said, and I wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate Ms. Langworthy on mayor pro tem. My vote for Councilmember Langworthy was no reflection on the job that Councilmember Reinhardt did over the last year. He did a good job as mayor pro tem. My concern was, is that I've heard through the grapevine that comments have been made that certain people should or should not be mayor pro tem because the mayor would be pulling strings or telling them what to do. And I think that's been the comment in the past when Mr. Stites or Ms. Sang or a few others were mayor pro tem. I believe in working together and with anybody who's mayor pro tem or, and I believe that I shouldn't be penalized for bringing things forward, having ideas, and running them through the mayor pro tem. That's what we're here for, is to do things for the city of Wheat Ridge. And I could tell you that in the last year or two, I've sat down with Councilmember Langworthy a couple of times. We had long discussions about different issues, and she's not going to be anybody's puppet, and neither was Mr. Reinhardt for that matter, and neither was Ms. Sang or Mr. Stites. So I'm pleased to see that council voted for, voted for Councilmember Langworthy. It's going to be a fun year, and I'm looking forward to a lot of positive things in the next year for the city of Wheat Ridge. So I also wanted to thank council for moving forward with the arts resolution. I wanted to thank, well, we had two members of the council who were on the cultural commission, Councilmember Langworthy and Councilmember Jay, who were, who have had a lot of input on this over the years, and I think it's a great situation to have for the city of Wheat Ridge, to beautify the city. And in the end, it's money that the city is going to We had long discussions about different issues. And she's not going to be anybody's puppet and neither was Mr. Reinhardt for that matter. And neither was Ms. Sang or Mr. Stites. So I'm pleased to see that council voted for, voted for councilmember Langworthy. It's going to be a fun year. And I'm looking forward to a lot of positive things in the next year for the city of Wheat Ridge. So I also wanted to thank council for moving forward with the arts resolution. I wanted to thank, well, we had two members of the council who were on the cultural commission, councilmember Langworthy and councilmember Jay, who were, who have had a lot of input on this over the years. And I think it's a great situation to have for the city of Wheat Ridge, to beautify the city. And in the end, it's money that the city is going to get from development fees. If we don't have no development, we're not going to have any money in the fund. It's really development driven. If there's developments in the city, like 44th and Wadsworth, Cabela's, that fund will be growing. But at a rate of 1% of the permit fees on use tax, which is, like I said, on the average, if you have $100,000, you could save for every $100,000 in permit fees, you're going to have $1,000 in funding for art, which will be addressed by the cultural commission. So thanks for council for bringing that forth and getting it done. We need to have the least restrictive environment for the city to operate in. We've got too much competition to the north and the south and the east and west of us. So happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your holiday. We're adjourned.